Um, okay, I will call to order the regular meeting. And are there any requests to remove items from the consent agenda for discussion?
Anything for me?
I have an item on seven A and I hope you're not too angry with me for bringing it up.
Nope, we'll take it. We need, we, we need that.
No.
Okay.
We, we encourage and report.
Okay.
That's right.
Yes, this is a learning organization.
You haven't heard what I have to say though.
Oh, okay, so maybe I'll take it back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing.
Now we're both going up, we're all looking, see what could.
Is that the check dispersment page?
It is.
Okay, I was actually gonna, I was gonna call that one out.
Oh, okay, can you write the checks too? That's good.
There was a last minute change that I'll tell you about.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. And um, can I have a motion to approve the order of items for the regular and consent agendas?
Second, oh yes.
Okay, thank you.
Be careful with that pen.
And, um.
Oh, it's leaking.
Oh. Okay, just a quick um, president's verbal report. I do want to mention that yes, this is National Friends of the Library Week. Um, a time when we show our appreciation for our friends group. And of course, ours is over and above the best. Um, we are constantly impressed with their sales. And um, that of course comes from their commitment to um, to doing good for the library. And um, while they'll be here tomorrow gathering and doing their sorting, uh, I have um, picked up a whole bunch of um, individually racked snacks for them and treats. I will come in in the morning and set it all up so that it's here for, for them when they gather
That's nice.
and they'll meet during that time also. Um, if the timing works, then um, I will be able to make some remarks then. Um, just reiterating the um, support and appreciation from the board of trustees. Um, if I am not able to make the timing work, then Tara will do that on our behalf.
Thank you for doing that.
So, oh yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And then also this card that we have going around will um, will present that to them as well. Um, the uh, staff and um, I think this is a Linden thing. Um, prepared uh, poster in the front that talks a little bit about what the Friends organization does and um, gives people an idea of how their support supports
Sure.
our library and programming and, you know, steam kits and all of the things.
Our winter blast and the winter party.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, all of our flamenco dancing and you know, all, all of the exciting programs. So um, so it's not only a, a good opportunity for us to recognize and give thanks to the Friends, but it's a great chance to kind of educate our patrons on the organize, the Friends organization
The organization.
and um, what they do for our library. So, that's one thing. The next thing that I want to tell you all about is that our new library cards are here.
Oh, look at that.
We have three new library cards. This is mine and this is my son's. We were so excited to find out that they were available and so we have, we have ours. And the third is um, a beautiful picture of flowers. And um, so they're here, so go get your new card.
Mmm, good.
And um.
We just sent out a press release today, it's not yet everybody know about it.
Great.
Nice.
Very exciting. Um, and that's, that's all I have, so then I'm gonna turn it over to Tara for the director's report.
All right, um, well, enjoy some creations here by our patrons.
It's pretty exciting.
Oh yeah.
On Saturday, we had a haunted gingerbread house making contest.
Oh wow.
This is one of the creations. There are a couple in the local history display which is out by adult services. This one has been on display in youth services.
How old was the other there?
Yeah, I was.
I'm not sure.
Young, but younger than?
I think it was a, I think this was an all ages thing, yeah, yeah.
I think it was a family thing too.
Gotcha, cause it's really cute, I always just love it.
It's a group effort, yeah. Um, so that's really cute. And then there were really wonderful um, Lego creations and this is a haunted house as well. Um, those are on display in the youth services department um, near, like right when you walk in the door. And it's really cute to read their little signs that they wrote next to it and look at the creative selling and other things. So, that's when our patrons have been up to in the last couple of weeks.
Are people pulling off the little pump I'd like to pull on, I'm gonna blow those. Yeah, you see, you see the glue, they're, it's glue.
It is glue, yeah. Oh, they're glued up.
So yeah, you'd be nibbling around it.
Um, all right, well, our door access upgrade project is going along very well. We are finished with phase one, which was all, you know, the staff areas. Phase two is going to be the study room doors, which um, require different software and a little bit more communication to our patrons. But we've been very happy with how it's gone. Um, we've had to, you know, work through some, um, not probably just challenges, different things, unexpected things came up, but we worked through it.
And your lobby issued a new card then?
No, we were able to use our same badges.
Oh, you did, good.
In fact, Linden was really the hero of making, making these work.
Yay.
Um, there was just this silly little thing that needed to be done, but it had to, every single staff person had to come and see Linden and um, just wave their badge over one of the readers. And then some things were done behind the scenes.
Wow.
But it just required every single staff person coming in to do that, so it took some purification.
Our own little Sherlock.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Um, plus she had to learn the software that runs these doors. So she had to set up the different access levels for different levels of staff, schedules, and then she had to figure out how to plan for the meeting rooms downstairs, cause that's another major aspect of that. Of course, Paul, Hugo, Tom and Steve were integral parts of that team too. And they were the ones working really closely with the Flying Locksmiths and just making sure everything was going well. So, I'm happy with how it went. Um, we learned a lot about each other and working together. This is really the first big team project that we've had in our, in our roles, you know, me as director, Paul, Hugo.
Sure. It's funny, cause I knew they were, I knew they were here not because I was here, but I saw one truck at, same day, one truck at Starbucks and one near Trader Joe's. So they were probably buying their lunch, yeah, and so it was two trucks, I was like.
Because the name is so much just, it sticks out, so yeah.
The name, yeah.
And their vans are very distinctive too, they have a cute graphic on it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is cute.
Well, they've been great to work with.
Good.
Um, so as I said, the next phase is the um, computer center. Um, we have a couple of things to do for that. Um, one is mainly tell patrons about it. We're planning an in-house publicity blitz, because most of the users of those study rooms are repeat users. So we're gonna put some signs and table tents in the computer area to make sure people know. Um, because the big difference is people will now have to reserve those rooms. And there are some parameters in place on that. So they'll be able to reserve up to four hours of use every day, um, up to seven days in advance.
Will, will someone be able to come in and say like, oh, I, okay, so they don't, they don't hold it?
Yes. They don't have to reserve it ahead of time, no. There's gonna be a kiosk in the computer area and they can preserve it right then in there. Or they can reserve it from a computer before they come in, where they can use the phone, yep, yeah.
Or their app.
Ooh. But how will they know when their reservation, their time is over? Is there like something in there, just somebody walks in and says, hey, it's my turn?
They're just gonna have to pay attention, yeah, know themselves, um, when it's, when it's out.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
So because of that, we had, those rooms are not numbered at all. There's no numbers on those rooms.
Oh, interesting.
But because now somebody can reserve, you know, oh, room four is my favorite, I'm gonna reserve that one today. They have to know which one room four is. So we're gonna put some um, numbers on the doors. It's gonna match the same font as all of our other plaques in the library, um, just so people will know which room they reserve.
Sure. Well, as a safety reason too, that would probably be a good thing, because if something was going wrong in that room, you know, someone was having a heart attack or something, how do you describe it? You're like, well, I'm like two down from, yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah, and staff know, we have a number system in our heads, like we're always like, you know, room five needs,
Oh. Okay.
is dirty or whatever it may be.
Right.
But yeah, for a medical person, that's, that's a good point.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
So stay tuned for more on that. I anticipate if everything goes perfectly, that might be complete by our next board meeting.
A November surprise.
Yeah. More happy patrons. More happy patrons.
Yes.
I hope they're happy. I think some people might be a little bit upset, because we have people who are there from nine thirty in the morning to nine AM.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, what is the time limit?
Four hours delay, yeah.
Four, okay.
Um, but I think this will make it more equitable, so somebody can't nest in those rooms.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you know, we've had people here who've complained about that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I should say too, that one thing that's not changing is this is still for Bloomfield Township residents only, with the exception of Oakland Literacy Council tutors and Cranbrook folks.
And I know they both appreciate it.
Good, yeah, we just talked to an Oakland Literacy Council person today.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
Um, you may have noticed, and I won't be upset if you didn't, in the monthly activity report, we've added some statistics about the new app. And we're tracking how many launches there are, which is essentially every time somebody downloads and launches it. Um, how many new devices it gets installed on and how many um, items are checked out using it. So there have been three hundred and eighty-two launches. And this is since beginning of December when we um, started putting it out, September, thank you. Um, three hundred and eighty-two launches, one hundred and twenty-one new devices and thirty items checked out. And we haven't promoted it at all, it's just mostly been word of mouth.
Oh, that's good.
And we plan a heavy promotion campaign around the winter newsletter. So, look for that in the activity report. Um, I thank Joan for asking about our new early childhood specialist. Um, this is a new position, you may remember that we created back in like spring or summer. Um, we finally, we had to post this twice to find somebody. Yeah, um, our new early hi- childhood specialist is Amy Nazer. Is that right, Linden? Nazer?
Nazer, yes.
Okay, it's an unusual spelling, so I keep saying it wrong. She, it's a part-time position, so you may not run into her very frequently. But Amy's got more than sixteen years of experience teaching at the preschool and early elementary level. Um, she's been subbing in preschools and elementaries as well. She also has a lot of experience writing curriculum, which is great for somebody who's supposed to plan story times.
Sure.
Um, she wrote in her cover letter that "A particular area of interest of mine is children's literature and selecting books and reading aloud were among my favorite activities." So, perfect for somebody who's gonna do story times.
Yep.
Um, I thought I'd also mention that the interview panel consisted of John Tager, the department head for youth services, Lauren Cottone Ellis, the assistant department head, and Laura Crayley. It's, it was supposed to be me, but I was in England at the time, so rather than hold up that process, we just subbed Laura in. Um, and we always ask applicants who are applying for a youth services librarian position to prepare a story time. We don't make them perform the story time, but we do make them walk us through like why they made the choices they made and how they would handle different things that come up. As a non-children's um, librarian, it's always fascinating to me to hear about the thought and intention that goes into it.
Sure.
Um, we put people through their paces. So, we're excited about Amy.
And she obviously did a good job.
I can remember, and the reason I asked when I saw the name is we discussed it at the personnel committee.
Right.
You were um, the person, or we still are, I don't remember.
Yeah.
I was, yes.
And we discussed how we needed that position. And then when I saw it was filled, I thought, well, what is her background?
Yeah.
That's why I showed you the email, so thanks.
Glad you asked.
That's great, yeah. Um, on Saturday morning, the library staff was dismayed to discover that the gate that we put down between the library and the lobby would not go up.
Oh no.
Oh geez. So, quick thinking staff routed, created a little path through the staff hallway and posted some pages in the area so they could help people find their way. So we were able to get patrons into the library so they can handle their library business. Um, the facilities person on staff called the uh, gate repair person. He was here by about eleven-thirty. He was able to put the gate up, which was good, but pronounced that it was not able to be, you know, used the way we normally do. So it was kind of stuck in the up position, where it has been since.
It, is it repairable, or did he say it's at its last?
Well, no, but it might be getting to that, cause of course, you know, this gate isn't made anymore and the parents don't have to come back.
Yeah, okay.
Um, it's a bummer though, because we open the main doors at nine AM and patrons can kind of mill around and shop and use the restroom. So we've, we found some stanchions in the basement and we've put those out, we'll put some signs up and that's been working okay. Um, the technician said it needs some new parts and it's one to five weeks to get those sorted.
Oh my gosh, okay.
So, um, I'm really hoping that they can get that repaired before early voting starts though, because
You're right.
early voting starts at eight-thirty in the morning.
Have they picked a date though, cause we got the postcard today and it didn't have a date on it?
Yeah, so, um, October twenty-eighth.
Okay, I don't know why it didn't have a date.
It is weird. Well, speaking of early voting, it starts October twenty-eighth. Um, it'll be nine days consecutively after that. The hours each day are eight-thirty to four-thirty. Um, facility staff will be here to open the building and greet the election workers. But as I understand it, those election workers just handle everything themselves. Um, and they should be self-sufficient and not need us. I'm planning to be here at least that Saturday and Sunday at eight-thirty, just to see how it goes. I'm curious, um, show my face to the election workers and just express our support and thrill about doing this. Um, we did have to sign an agreement with Oakland County and the copy of that is in the pass around folder if you would like to read it. I did have um, Danny as library board president review it, Shane as our resident attorney reviewed it, and our library attorney also reviewed it. So, um, yeah, it's, it's right around the corner.
And, and just remind me, um, because I know that, that Sunday is the last day
Yep.
for, for early voting.
I think it's Sunday the fifth, yeah.
Fifth. And then the sixth, there's
No voting.
no voting. And um, they will remove everything.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And because we have, there's some room is rented for something, right?
There's some. Yeah, yes. They asked that
Cause during these nine days, we can't have any, we can't do anything in there.
Correct.
So.
That's probably the biggest downside of this, is it, you know, we use that room a lot.
Yes.
But, yes, you are correct, that there will be stuff in the room. Um, we asked them to remove it Monday. Um, and they said that for future elections, it would be great if we could leave it in there until Wednesday, because they're busy, obviously.
Yeah.
Cause then there's voting on Tuesday.
So may, so in the future, we will
We'll just book it.
leave that, yeah, okay.
Um, and then since Joy isn't here, I thought I would let you know that the Friends made nearly fifty-six hundred dollars at their last sale, including, um, no, that doesn't include, one hundred and thirty-three dollars in donations. And they changed their membership levels around, so they've kind of increased a couple of the prices. There should be an envelope in your pass around folder. The biggest change is that they bumped the lifetime membership from five hundred to one thousand. And they've included a new level at five hundred dollars called Circle of Friends. Yeah, I got my renewal on the mail. Did you, with the new prices?
Oh, actually, I am a few weeks back.
Did it have the new prices?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm pretty sure. I can't remember, you know, I wrote a check and I left it at the desk, so I guess I'm still a member. Yeah. And that's all I have to report.
Lots of things.
Yeah, it is a lot of things, yeah.
Um, and then I just don't know if you mentioned that Catherine isn't here tonight.
Thank you, yeah, Catherine is not here tonight. She is at the Michigan Library Association Conference in Kalamazoo. And she was on the planning committee this year to help choose programs, find keynote speakers, yeah, so she's quite involved with it.
And for us, I mean, she'll bring back
Yeah.
Yeah, exciting information.
That's right, yeah.
Um, okay, thank you very much for that report. And can I please have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, well, then let's just move right along to our call to the public. And Laura is with us as our SOC representative.
Hello, hi.
Hi.
Um, so we've mainly been uh, just working hard on the uh, winter party. And as we all saw, we have
Wow!
we have a invitation. Guys, if you help create it.
Look at that!
It's amazing.
It's, yeah, it's in our folder.
It's in your regular folder.
In your own folder.
Oh, okay.
So, looking forward to seeing everyone there. We're excited about having it at Adiamos with Quizzo. We've gotten those deposits put down and of course, we've chosen the menu. We've been hard at work with that and that's sort of been our main thing. We have also been um, putting together some staff events. We're gonna have a craft show in late November.
Cool.
Um, and so I'm looking forward to that personally. Um, I get a lot of gifts at that.
Oh, smart.
Yes, good idea.
So yeah, great for uh, library morale.
Love it. Plus Laura is a very talented maker of, yes.
Are you a crafter? I am.
What do you name?
I am a potter, so I'm
Oh, nice.
floral, nature, um, functional pottery, yes.
Good for you.
Cool.
So, yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah, that's, that's us.
I like that. And what's the date of that one?
Um, so that is the Thursday, the Monday after Thanksgiving until the following Wednesday.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So I don't know those numbers off my head, but
It's the twenty-seventh of November.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that's the Monday.
And we're having it in a meeting room, so it's
Meeting room two.
Meeting room two.
Oh, downstairs, okay.
Great.
The French should consider doing a gift wrapping down there for the gifts. That would be cute.
Ooh.
That would be cute.
Thank you so much. All right, and we don't have any unfinished business to discuss, but we do have some new business this month. Uh, first up is our annual policy review and um, we do have a motion for that. And I think this is on page thirty-four, we wanna
The motion is
It is, on thirty-four mine, but I, I
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so why don't you tell us all about that, Tara?
Oh, I would love to. Um, okay, well, the, well, do you wanna say anything about it, Judy, you were on the committee.
Um, yes, I was looking up an author's name, um, cause I want to tell you about it later. Yes, we um, talked about, I think there were only two issues that we had. They weren't issues, they were just words, we were wordsmithing them a little bit, but there were, there were very few things that we needed to change. I think that um, the people who looked at it the last, this is the first time I've been on this, this committee for a while. Um, the people who worked on it in, just a couple of years ago, really went through it with a fine-tooth comb. So, um, I just had the, the word, and I'm trying to think where it is, um.
That was on page, it's fifty-two to fifty-five.
Okay.
Is where that collection development policy is.
But there were just, it was just really um, different words and um, I think that Oh, so my, my only issue was, um, we use the word on page
Should be fifty-two.
It is fifty-two, so very last paragraph, you'll see it. Um, we had used the word diversity and I just think that there's some trigger words that we have in our community. And I think that might be one of them, and so I took exception to that, not that I have any issues with it myself, but I just, I want us to be, um, I want us to be able to play on both sides of the, the aisle and I want us to have like that seesaw and it goes up and down the exact same way. So I wanted to change the word diversity to a wide range.
Yes.
And I just think that that's a little bit easier um, to digest, so. And then, um, the others, um, the philosophy was put on fifty, fifty-three, or no, what did we do? Uh, we, we crossed out, well, you can, you can talk now.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna tell you what I, I expressed.
Yes.
But it was very nice working with Shane and of course, with Tara. Um, Shane is a savvy guy.
Yeah, he is. Well, you all are. Um, yeah, so our policies don't change super often, because they are guiding principles. But it is important to review them every year and make sure that we're not missing something that might hurt us or um, you know, make the couple of tweaks we've made this time. Um, so, we, we changed our vision statement and mission statement earlier um, in December when we did the strategic plan. So I, we had to change that, that was on page thirty-seven. And then I, there were a couple of just weird little edits throughout the bylaws that, they're mostly like typos that I fixed. Um, and then the next thing was on page forty-two, which I think is our privacy policy. And page fifty-nine, which is our internet use policy. Both of those refer to our MetroNet acceptable use policy, which hearkens back to a day when we got our internet service through MetroNet. But we haven't used them for inter- internet service at least ten years. So I thought we should remove those two references, very minor. And then um, the men, the one that Judy mentioned, which was changing that word diversity. And then Shane pointed out that in our collection development guidelines, which are related to the policy, that's more of a procedure, but it's informed by our collection develop, development policy. And that's on page fifty-five, I believe, yes. You know, we have a process in place that if somebody uh, does not uh, objects to an item that we have in our collection, they have to fill out a request for reconsideration form, which makes them do quite a bit of work actually to um, say why they object to the item. And one of the tactics that groups are taking right now as they challenge materials is coming in with like a list of two hundred items and saying, we don't want any of these books in the library. Well, this provision would require that a separate request for reconsideration form be completed for each item being reviewed. So if somebody wants to challenge twenty-five items, they gotta fill out twenty-five forms.
Yeah.
Puts their money where their mouth is.
Yeah.
So that was a good addition as well. Um, and then SOC has their own bylaws. And um, that, according to our procedures and policies, needs to be approved by you all. So SOC has spent, really this started with the previous incarnation of SOC. They had identified that the bylaws had not been updated in, I don't know, probably twelve or fifteen years. And there's just, you know, duties and roles shift a little bit and it just needed to reflect reality, be updated to reflect reality. So they went through those bylaws with a fine-tooth comb, made a bunch of changes. Um, they were notated here for you to review. This has been um, shared with all staff and staff have voted their support of these bylaws as well. So you, your vote is needed too. And I think that that is all of the policy updates that we are suggesting. And if you approve, there is a motion.
Well, first, thank you very much for explaining all of that. Thank you very much to Judy for, um, and Shane for um, serving on this committee for us. And um, we do have that um, motion and that is on page thirty-four. Judy, would you like to read that for us, please?
Sure. I move to approve the revisions to the library bylaws of the library board of trustees policy, privacy, sorry, privacy policy, collection development policy and guidelines, internet access policy and the SOC bylaws.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
These are great changes.
And I thought, you know, Judy, when you mentioned the wide range of viewpoint as opposed to diversity, it also seems to fit in more with the strategic plan, doesn't it?
Yeah, sounds illuminating, yes.
Something just jogged about it, that it seemed like it.
Sure.
It meshes.
It meshes, yeah. So, I think that was a very good choice.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we are going to move on to pension and OPEB reporting.
Mm-hmm.
And that is page eighty-six. Okay. Okay, do you wanna talk about that?
Sure.
Great.
So, um, you just heard about our audit and we talked about the pension and the OPEB um, amounts of money that are in our budget for, for the, during our audit process. Um, in twenty sixteen, the state of Michigan wrote a new, I guess it's twenty seventeen, wrote a new law to require public entities to fund their pension and OPEB liabilities by at least forty percent. And part of that law is to report out every year, um, a variety of things. Um, and so this is basically just telling you all that we have done our diligence and we have reported that out. Um, there are two PDFs that contain a lot of numbers and information. This report is, you know, just downloaded from the state of Michigan's website. Monica went through this with um, notes from the previous finance coordinator and filled all this out. Um, I wasn't planning to go through any of these unless you guys really wanna dig into the actuarial. But did you have, if you had a chance to review and if you had any questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
And Matt Witty will be here in January for this, right?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, Matt Witty will be here in January for our OPEB trust meeting and he can talk more about the performance of the investments. But we're still in compliance, um, we're fifty percent funded. But we're still in compliance, um we're fifty percent funded with our OPEB and the pension is really um in the hands of the township, so we just have a a little portion of it. So that's just for your information.
Okay, thank you. Uh okay, the last piece of new business is a proposal for the library grounds drainage improvements. And um that is on page eighty nine. So Tara, tell us about that.
All right, well, I think we were all.
Chapter twelve.
We were all at the building and grounds committee meeting, um I'm glad that you're able to join remotely, I think that works out well for us. And you heard Joe's proposal to um put the detention basin up at the corner of Timberlake and Lone Pine. Um but before that happens, a lot of design work needs to take place and a topographical survey and a tree inventory needs to take place. Um and so the proposal that Joe presented was to start with all of that work. The proposal was for sixty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um and I know we talked about some ways we could maybe make that survey à la carte, but we decided that it would be best to do the whole kit kaboodle, just in case we need that. Um.
And when that survey is complete, we will have.
Mm hmm.
They, we will own it, right?
Yes.
We'll have all the information so that we can.
Yeah, Keith had asked about the pub, the way the format was going to be and.
Okay.
Joe made it clear that it will be a format that we can use.
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
Yes, and after the meeting was over, um the second presenter Jenna Walker mentioned that she has in her possession um the two thousand six surveys that were done in anticipation of the two thousand eight building improvements project, so she has already actually transferred those over to Joe.
Oh nice.
Um so that was a really nice sharing of information. Um so yeah, we just, because this is a quite a bit of of money, um I would like your vote on this, if you approve this proposal to move forward. I'll contact Joe tomorrow morning, we'll start working on that survey. Does anybody have any questions or wanna talk more about it?
Um I mean, and you know, I'm not a technical person, but the proposal is readable.
Mm hmm.
And I can understand it, it makes perfect sense, um and after the meeting is, you know.
We know that Joe has certainly done his homework.
Oh right, he's, yeah, very knowledgeable, so.
I think the thing that shocked me most of it, that we, at the size of this building, we only have one someone.
I know.
I mean, that shocked me, shocked me, so yeah.
Yeah.
If nothing else, that would, that's, yeah, so.
Yeah, so I will say Joe, um he wrote me some follow up questions afterwards and he said he thought he heard at some point that we were gonna wait until after the millage was passed to proceed with this. What I remember hearing was that we thought it was a good idea to proceed with this part because it needs to be done before winter.
Correct.
Work on the design up until February, make sure we get that millage and then we would proceed with any construction.
Correct.
Um.
And the only reason why we didn't want to vote that day was because this is an open, well, that is too, but this this is an open meeting that's um today um just orally being taped, but um at least it's out there for people to hear, so and it should be on the record, so.
Yeah.
Would you like me to read this?
Great.
Okay, unless there was anything else you wanted to say.
Nope.
I move to approve the proposal to improve drainage on the library campus from Spalding to Decker, nine oh five South Boulevard East, Rochester Hills, Michigan, four eight three oh seven for sixty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Great, this will be great to move forward.
Yeah, I know the other thing I was gonna say is that even if the millage doesn't pass, I think we should try, yeah. We should try to find a way to make this a priority because this is a big problem.
Yes.
Yeah, this is a problem.
Yeah.
Water is always a problem.
I I also think that this is the kind of thing that um we will we will be able to see results.
Yes.
You know, and um there are some things that we that we do and you just don't, they're just not as exciting.
Yeah, sure.
You just don't see the results in the same way.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think with this, we we really will.
Absolutely.
Um.
And you don't want any more damage.
That's right.
To the lower level.
That's right.
Strides. And staff coming in and special cleaners, I mean, all that adds up.
Right, right. But I will say that one thing that we have to do is our due diligence on when we go for permits, because we know, we don't know to the extent is it just open company, is it just, I know it's not just the township, but is it the state? But I think we need to have, and I'm pretty sure we do, I mean, I think we just have this file that's this big, that we can just say, this is what we've tried and it's not working.
Yes. Yeah.
So this is our our next attempt, so um because I think you might have a little pushback on maybe one or two of the permits, but I'm not sure which ones, but you know, hearing his long list that they're just, but I think we, if we have that, which I know we do, but something that he can just say, hey, this is this is what they've tried, so.
But like you said, this is easy, this puts, takes burden off of the public system too, so.
Right, absolutely.
I think they should be in support of that.
They, I I'm sure they will, but I, you know, you never know, there's always one squeaky wheel.
It's good to show your work.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That this is just not a pie in the sky, oh, let's, you know, it's Wednesday, let's.
Let's spend sixty thousand.
Yeah, right, right.
Right, I mean, more than, I mean, I will say it really does show that we've been good, that we are good.
Oh my gosh, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So, yeah. So wonderful, I look forward to this moving forward, thank you.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Um okay, we can now discuss the items removed from the consent agenda and Keith, you said there was something on seven A.
Yes, and I hope this doesn't seem too fastidious, I just wanna understand one thing.
No problem, Keith.
Okay. Um there was a check on page, this is seven A,
Mm hmm.
for sixteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and eighty six cents for a new photocopier for administration. And guess, I was wondering this, when do we decide that a capital investment has to be approved by the board as opposed to not approved by the board? Cause it seems like we sometimes talk about items of approximately this expense and get votes on it. So I was just wondering how a decision was made to make a capital investment without bringing it here, is there a a level that? That's my question.
Yeah, that's a good question, um there is a purchasing policy, which I can bring to you next time or email to you. Off the top of my head, I can't remember, this is just under that threshold.
Yes.
For that, we, and also we had purchased copiers from this company before. Um so that was one reason to not go out for an RFP for this product because so, not sole source, but um like a continuation of a vendor. And our other copy machine was starting to break down too.
I get it, I'm sure there was a reason for getting it, I just wanted under, okay, so there's.
So there's a of of monetary threshold.
There is.
For which, for determining.
Yes, when board approval is needed.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Quick question then to um go along with Keith then, um so this is in the administrative offices, so is there a budget for the administrative offices and what goes in there? And with this, is that where it fell under?
This came out of the capital improvements.
Okay.
We had put it in there for this year.
Oh, so you expected this?
Yes.
Okay.
We were, well, it's, we knew it was coming.
So we, we saw this in the budget?
That was in that spread out sheet.
So we would have seen this, okay.
Okay, fair enough, I don't, I didn't recall that, but fine.
Well, there's a lot of details in that budget.
Yeah, but that was the one, the sheet that I love, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was my only question, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
So good question, my thing to mention is that in the check register, and I think I called this out in my comments, there was a, it was check number two, three, four, one, eight, made payable to Alma College Library in the amount of eighty five dollars.
Mm hmm.
Well, today, the patron came forth and found found books.
Found them, found them.
Too funny.
Oh, so we just removed that check from the check register, ripped it up, um I voided it out.
Oh, so, okay.
So it's just an alteration to what you're seeing here, we did not actually put that expense out.
Oh, it didn't, it wasn't already sent.
Correct.
Oh, cause you guys have to approve this and then you get.
Right, so we have to, yeah.
Oh yes, and then you send, yeah.
Um I I will say, it seems like just in the last couple of months, I've been seeing a bunch of milkhead losses.
Yes. I noticed that too.
But like, it seems like all of a sudden.
Mm hmm. I, I think it was.
Or if it's maybe for summer, or it's, maybe it's just people were getting things in their stomach.
They're in their cottage, yeah.
Maybe.
And and.
Traveling with it?
In the back of my mind, I'm thinking, the person really wanted that book and so they just say they lost it.
Maybe.
Ooh.
Maybe.
Well, do do we charge them?
Oh yeah.
Of course, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We charge them and then, but we have to pay.
Pay the, the original source, of course, yeah.
But is it? But is it out of print then?
Oh, that's interesting.
Alma or whatever library is as lock, right?
That's an interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that crosses my mind all the time, I.
That probably, the value of the book is more than what they, yeah, it's just a.
That's a rough uh risk.
Yeah.
That is, that is a nasty thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, you know, I like to assume.
That's a diabolical mind, dude.
Good intent, well, I think, I think, we'll hope this person just thought they'd misplaced it and then found it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'm glad they did, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And not that we have twenty five, you know, every month, but, but yeah, I think it was last month.
Right. They were like three years.
And I remember remarking to Monica that there were like five.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And then, yeah, there were a couple this month too.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, well, let's not make a habit of it.
Yes, I, that's what I think.
Um is there anything else to discuss from the, that was removed?
No.
Okay, uh well, it's time for other.
Wait, wait, you have to um.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Prove those, yes.
Items or items removed.
Right.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you so much, Lyndon, uh I, we do need a motion to approve the items removed from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and now it is time for other. Does anybody have any other?
I have one, possibly two.
Okay.
Possibly two, I don't know if you're, I'm sending you, um if you, okay, so anyway, I had the pleasure, a few of us had the pleasure of being invited to go to the War Memorial in Gross Point to hear two amazing speakers and it was a, an event um to support the um Gross Point Library. And first off, their new addition to that War Memorial and that day was stunning, oh my gosh, and they have the, this um replica of the um on the beaches of Normandy, there's this beautiful sculpture and they have it there, it's stunning, from the same, you know, it was cast. But anyway, um the one that I really was excited to see, um and the other woman I know quite well, cause she spoke at Xlebers, but um Anthony, I had to, couldn't think of his last name, Anthony Doer, who wrote All the Life, um We Cannot See, and he was fascinated, oh my gosh. I mean, he showed close up pictures, like his brother is so smart and his brother works at for MIT and there's this microscope and then there's one show up and the audience like, eh, it's a fly's eye, of course it was, and but you know, it's just, but he just said that he, he just, he was so, his mind is just constantly going and so for his first four books, they were all um either autobiographies or about a particular subject, then he realized to get a bigger audience, he had to, so this was his first book, but anyway. Um the reason why I brought it up was that there were over two hundred people. And they were so smart because they had it as a brunch, not a lunch, so it was much more um sat, you know, much more um affordable, but also everything was underwritten anyway, but um the reason they got Anthony is because Anthony teach, or is teaching for ten weeks at University of Michigan. So I went and talked to them and there's a program that they have, and not that I wanna borrow from them, but I wanna borrow from them because they were able, someone knew, University of Michigan, that this man was coming and he's, I mean, it was, it was like he was a rock star. And you know, everyone, they were clutching the books and getting new books and all the books are um sold by Bookbeat, which I think is great, that we're supporting small um bookshops, but it's just an idea to think about because truly, um I know Metro Detroit Book and Author is coming back, but their litany of authors is not near as exceptional as the two that who were there, but Anthony was just, he was the driving force. And so they do have a program at University of Michigan and it's worth looking into the authors that they bring in. Um and so it's in the English department and as I said, he was teaching workshops on writing. So um but I just, the food was, you know, it was, it was breakfast food and it was just fine and it was great and the coffee wasn't bad, but at War Memorial, I don't know who did that edition, but it's just wonderful, so.
So it was a ticketed event, raising money for the Gross Point movement?
Ticketed event, the tickets were, yep, the tickets were thirty dollars each, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
No, and um the food was underwritten.
So breakfast and then two speakers?
Two speakers, yeah. Um so anyway, I just, it was, so we we started, people arrived at ten thirty. The talk was at noon, I mean, it started at noon and they were very good about each table, you know, they had two tables out there, the the line and um so by noon, everyone was finished and the staff let people talk and um and they were supposed to talk for no more than twenty minutes, Anthony um talked for I wanna say close to forty, but he was so fascinating, showing the slides and then their note, they didn't take any questions at all.
Oh.
Um and so then they went in there and they signed the books and um, you know, so Bookbeat got a portion of it and I think they gave a percentage to it, but anyway, it's just an idea. Um but as I said, I don't wanna take from them, but I I know that they're not gonna do this every year, I think they do it every other year.
Okay.
So it's not as if it's something that, but it's just an idea, um because I think that people are just hungry for hearing these speakers and and their process of writing, so it's very interesting.
Okay.
Um the other one was, we had talked about at the policy committee, did you want me to bring that up?
Sure, yeah.
So um as part of the policy committee, we review bylaws and I just think that it's time, we haven't done it in a few years. But um and I talked to um Tara and to Shane um to review the bylaws of this committee because we haven't updated those, we haven't looked at them and we haven't reviewed them and I think it's an important thing that you know, everyone else has done it, SOC has done it, um we're doing it here, so I think it's just something that we need to keep in the forefront that that's important for us, so I'd like to recommend, um if you guys all agree, and I don't know that you need a motion, but that the policy committee, um Shane and and yours truly and, you know, we'll have you, Danny, if you'd like, and we'll all read them. But I think that we just need to um look at them, see if we have to tweak anything or massage anything or actually update things, because things are constantly revolving and bring it back to the board and have them take a look and and vote on those, so that's what I was gonna say, so that was number two, cause I didn't, yeah, so.
So we have a whole board review of the bylaws.
Right, right, yeah, so and I don't know how to proceed, I don't know if we'd send them to you or if we would look at them first and make our suggestions, cause I know everyone's time, particularly with the holidays coming, it's valuable, but I just think that it's something that we haven't done.
I think my, I I think it would probably uh be helpful to send them to everybody, so that everybody can see them and read them, okay?
Okay. Catherine, mm hmm. And send their suggestions.
And send their suggestions to the committee.
To me, yeah, or to Shane.
And then have the committee meet to review them and move forward.
Okay. And I would hope that in the meantime, also Tara, that you and Catherine would take a look at them and whomever you think also maybe would have great eyes, um.
When do you think the last time they were?
Well, they get reviewed every year at the policy review.
Yeah, but I don't think we've really dug into that, yeah, scrutinizing, yeah, I think.
Not as focused on that, yeah. Well, I can tell you.
Oh yeah, maybe we can see the amendments.
Yeah.
You know, when I took that class, um Library Trusteeship one oh one, the person that was presenting the class suggested that the board take a few minutes at each of its meetings to go through a section of the, as a way.
Oh, that's an interesting.
That's was their suggestion about how to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to see how long they are, so that it doesn't take us two years, I think it's a good idea.
So.
Yeah, they're not that long, really.
I didn't think so.
They're like three or four pages.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
Maybe take ten or fifteen minutes for a few minutes.
In each.
That was their suggestion, I'm not saying we do it that way, but they did come up with that.
Yeah. So instead of just one committee working on it, it's a whole group.
Right.
Um yeah, but I just, I I.
Yeah, I just like, I like that idea.
Yeah, I just think that it's important that um we keep current with what we're doing and and what we have to do, so.
Mm hmm. I mean, the last amendment was September of twenty twenty two and I can't remember what it was. Oh, I know, it was to update for the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, you're right, you're right, and that, yeah, and we were, of course.
Oh.
Um so there's that.
Were we, we were here then in twenty twenty two, yeah.
Yeah, it it was because we had some, a line about.
Because they were, had changed, that some people could be.
Yeah.
Right, on Zoom, or or phone.
We.
Well, we had been on Zoom, well, for how long?
Right, but the law changed that it could only be the military or in um hospital, yeah.
And then they changed, right.
Yeah, because we we had a line that said something like attendance at the meeting could happen by electronic means, but I think I updated, yeah, it's just said as permitted by law.
Right, yeah.
So that would cover us in case that law changes again.
Right. Well, then if you don't mind sending those out and then we'll take a look at it, maybe I'm considering.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Whatever, we can just read them ourselves and then see.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having that expectation.
It's just a thought that was brought up in that year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very public, it's very transparent.
Yeah.
So what I could do is kind of divide them up in a way that makes sense and then I can send out, call out whatever section I I suggest we talk about at that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Mm hmm.
Yep, good idea.
Great. Um speaking of authors, I will mention that I popped into the local author fair that we had here.
Oh yeah.
Um I think.
Two Saturdays, I think.
Yeah, two Saturdays and um and it was just great to see, there were, there were lots of. Yeah, two Saturdays, and, and it was just great to see, there were, there were lots of different types of books that these authors had written, so, that was really nice and I saw in our comments, that someone said how great that was.
In comments, yeah.
Um, also worth noting that it's always lovely when the comments are all pretty great. Um, okay, is there any other, other? No?
Please extend our thanks out to the friends.
Yes, absolutely.
I know that they'll get a card, but we do know, we acknowledge the amount of work that they do and the dedication and the amount of, my gosh, monies that they bring in, so that they allow us to do things that we wouldn't have thought of or couldn't have, I don't know that we couldn't have done, but that it always helps us because we have more monies in the conference to do other things, so.
Absolutely, and, you know, they, they are all very dedicated, you know, and they love this library, like, we love this library.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And so I will absolutely pass that along.
Thank you.
You know, the public may not recognize the fact that the, that the library can only use tax money in certain ways. And if we didn't have the friends, there are things that could not be done.
Sure.
Be interesting, be nice to maybe somehow make that.
Well, and I, that's what is so important, that they do understand that, because it is up to the public to support the book sales,
Yes.
to, to make donations and then to support the book sales, so that, so that they, we can support these programs.
Right. Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
I hope that that is made clear in some of the, um.
We try, yeah.
Yeah, the, you know, poster and messaging, but, um.
We always try to mark everything in the newsletter that's supported by the friends with a little notation. The friends are invited to, they're invited to attend any program that they support and have a few minutes to speak. They don't always take us up on that, cuz that's a lot of time and energy, especially the chamber music concert, they always speak at that.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, um, my family takes out some of the steam kits now and then, and they are all, can they have a sticker on them that says, you know, provided by the friends, and so there, we, we do have some things like that
Sure. Sure.
that highlight their contribution, but it would be great if people like really knew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I do have to ask Tara.
Those are your solar eclipse glasses.
The next one's in twenty twenty-four.
Well, yes, I see, this was for the eclipse we couldn't see.
Yeah.
Right.
Um.
But there's one in April, is it April eighth?
Twenty twenty-four, the other side.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah, April eighth, sorry.
No, other, not the blue one.
Other, no.
Oh, yes, right, right, it's coming next year. Um, I remember.
The pandemic.
Uh, yes, the pandemic. Um.
That sounds crazy.
And I, of course, needed, um, four pair of the eclipse glasses, but I didn't know if the library was going to do anything again, it was quite overwhelming.
So we learned our lesson and we are going to give them out in advance. Much like, we're treating them like a kit, like a cracked kit. And so we've got them available at the desk, if somebody wants one, they ask for them. Each library card gets, can get up to four.
Oh.
Could I ask a favor of that, though? Could you do me a favor for all of us and just, not even sign a name, but just could you send this to Marion and just say, thanking of you?
Oh, yes, I will, that's a, you know what, I'm gonna see her tomorrow.
Oh, no, you can't give it to her, you just have to, or slip it into her, her satchel or whatever she has and just say, thanking of you.
How long, how many people were in line?
Oh, my god.
I don't know, but we, like, the police came because we were blocking traffic and all that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. All I know is that I got terrible looks, cuz I was coming in, and they're like, cuz I lost my pair and they were nice enough to give me a pair. I gave a donation. Gave a donation, get it on the road, but anyway, um, and yeah, and people were like, boo.
But no, we're gonna hand them out ahead of time and then where they're gone, they're gone.
They're gone, yeah.
So we won't have that. We realized we made a mistake, like a few days before we started getting them.
But you know Marion was to blame because she's like, no one's gonna come for this, no one.
Yeah, it was an appetite, yeah, yeah.
For two weeks, no one, no one helped.
And then there was that public, there, it was on the news, I mean, there was this national publicity and then it just became a whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And once we went down that road of not giving them out, we had just had to keep going.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, FYI, I thought I remembered something about these actually degrading, from the child.
Yes, they do. Oh, interesting, okay.
So, um, who, somebody was telling me that, I think it was Catherine, said her dad, he lives in California, he's in the path of totality of eighty percent, and he said he just stacked like a bunch of sunglasses on top.
Oh, my god.
Cuz that's really how they are, is just like some really thick layers of.
Yeah. Too funny, yeah, someone should have taken a picture, that's funny.
Anyway.
All right, well, our next scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, November twenty-first, and.
What day is, is Thanksgiving that same week?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So will you all be there, that meeting?
Thanksgiving?
Yes.
The meeting, I'll be there.
Oh, the meet, oh, uh, I'm sorry, the day, oh.
Do you want to?
Yeah, it's going over. Yeah, it's the twenty-first, it's, yeah, that's the Tuesday of the week of Thanksgiving.
Twenty-first.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I will be there.
If you have family and friends in town, bring them to the meeting.
No, I'll just come in my apron with turkey grease on the front or some.
We'll welcome you, Jen.
Bring samples. The topic of that meeting will be the election of officers. And with that, we can adjourn our meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Lyndon.
Yes, thank you, Lyndon.